All right, so here we are with our second meeting in May for the Pots Grove School Board. Would we all rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I am the United States of America and the Republic of West Pots Grove, one nation, indivisible, liberate, free, and just for all.
Thank you. The secretary will please note the role and you'll see that everybody's here. Terrific. Nobody missing for as we get closer to the end of the year. You have to look for that for everybody and we're no exception. But tonight we're all here, so that's a good thing. We do have an executive session announcement prior to the board meeting this evening. We did have a brief executive session to discuss personnel. And that brings us to my favorite part of the meeting, the public comment section. Least populated, most encouraged. Any public comment for this evening? Anybody turn anything? Into you? So be it. So we'll press on to the report of the superintendent if you would care to take over.
Thank you, Mr. Lingra. At this time, I would like to take time and opportunity to introduce the Pots Grove Recreation Board. And they've had some changes on that board and there's some new people and new faces that I would like our board to have an opportunity to meet tonight. So I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. Grimm, who's a board member on this particular committee. Mrs. Grimm?
Well, thank you. If I could ask the board to come forward. These are a great bunch of guys. We have a new director and that is Pam Ball. Brad Mayberry, he's the president and he's the West Pots Grove representative. Michelle Thompson is the vice president. She's the Upper Pots Grove representative. Sidney Coleman is the secretary for the Pots Grove School Board Citizen Representation. Jerilyn Cohen is the Lower Pots Grove representative. I represent the school board. Mike McGrody, the Lower Pots Grove Commissioner. Rainey Spade's the Upper Pots Grove Commissioner. And Charles Valentine is the West Pots Grove Commissioner. I have been on the board a couple of years now and I cannot tell you how hard they work for our community and our kids. And now that we have a little change, we would like to thank Jill Ludi for her eight-plus years or her dedication to all the students and the community. And she's helping Pam shadowing her, so I'm going to hand it to you guys.
Thanks, Jill.
I'd like to introduce Pam Ball. She is a resident of Upper Pots Grove. She has a son at Lower. I see him all the time. For good stuff. And this is Brad Mayberry. He is our citizen rep for West Pots Grove. Very active. He used to be a member of our playground crew when he was younger and that's what his summer job. So he knows all the ins and outs. Very proud of the Pots Grove Recreation Board, all the things we do get to offer, especially our summer playground, which kids started coming into the office at Lower February asking me when signups were going to be. As soon as they found out that I was part of it, they were asking. So they're looking forward to that starting up shortly. That will run from the end of June to the end of July for five weeks, where we have a bunch of stuff planned for the kids. We run from at Ringing Rocks and at West Pots Grove. Monday through Thursday, the kids attend there. And then Fridays, we go swimming at North End Pool. We have programs planned for the kids. We have field trips that the kids attend and it gives them opportunities that they might not get otherwise to be able to go out and see things that they don't usually have to see. We do offer also adult volleyball on Tuesday nights at Ringing Rocks during the school year. And that's growing. I think we got six new people this year to come out. So it is growing. Very happy with that. Our community band is fabulous. If you ever have a chance to go see them perform, I highly recommend it. They are just very entertaining. They're wonderful. I wish I had the exact... It is June 24th. I have the paper in my bag.
June 29th, Sunday.
June 9th. Is it on the... Okay. I thought it was at the end. Okay. That's my fault. June 9th, I have the paper in my bag. And it's to celebrate all that they have. And they are doing a tribute to Mr. Roberts, who was our conductor at one time and had started a lot of our stuff with the community band. Yes, yes. So we're very excited about that.
Where can we find you?
Oh, yes. We have swim lessons for the kids. We're actually opening that up to hopefully three times next year. We've had so many requests from parents to offer it more so that their kids can get better adapted to the water, so they feel safer with them over the summer around pools. You can find us on Facebook at Pots Grove Rec. And we have a new site that I kind of dressed up a little bit, which Pam, that's her go-to thing. So she'll do a lot better than I did to get that going. So that's potsgroverec.com. You can find us there.
The other thing we just want to mention that they've worked very hard on is making sure that the counselors are all certified and have safety and know what to do. They have protocols and things like that. And like I said, this group, they work really, really hard, really hard. And thank you.
I don't know if there's any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry about how I'm dressed. I was at open gym with my girls.
Okay, moving on to 4.2, the recap of the budget and capital plan. What I ask Mr. Nestor to do for us this evening is just take time to recap the current status of our budget and give us an update on any new information that he might have received from Harrisburg or any other place that would affect our budget as far as updates. And then just have the board review the capital plan and our commitment to the future of keeping our facilities and heading in the right direction. So Mr. Nestor, if you could update the board, that'd be great.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Unfortunately, I don't have any new information. So I'm just going to reiterate some of the information we shared at committee at the last board meeting so that you guys can all hear it. But we've had a very good budget year this year. We started out much lower than we anticipated and we continued the ability to trim that budget down to a workable level this year. But I wanted to give a highlight of some of the things that we had to overcome in this year's budget. We had about $2.3 million of additional expenditures this year over last year. And they're broken down roughly into four components. What I call mandated cost increases were salary and benefit increases for our staff that we have in place now. The contractual salary increases were about $600,000. And the related PISsers increases and FICA increases, social security increases, were approximately another $600,000. So that's $1.2 million just to maintain the people we have in their positions. We also had some additional mandated costs in the form of charter school tuitions, our cyber school tuitions primarily, but our charter school in general, went up about $588,000 this year in our budget. And we had spoken earlier in the season about our alternative education program having an increase in the mandated number of hours. That is going to cost about $45,000. So between those mandated costs, we're up approximately $1.8 million. In addition to that, we had some things that we had some discretion over that we think have improved or impacted the student experience going forward. We added the third language at a cost of almost $240,000. We added a teacher on special assignment for the special ed program to help the administration deal with all the IEP requirements and administrative requirements. We're proposing to increase the capacity of a group of our aides to be able to respond to more in-depth behavioral items throughout the district. That's going to be about $60,000. And we've added a crisis counselor in the budget to deal with some of the mental health issues we're experiencing at the secondary level. So that added another half million dollars to the budget. That's what we had to overcome, about $2.3 million. Now, we've been able to overcome that. We've had some savings in healthcare premiums this year. We had 12 teachers retire, which has a significant impact. And we've had revenue enhancements. So we have been able to offset all of that $2.3 million except for about $240,000. Okay? And that $240,000 equates to about a .7% tax increase. So that's what we were looking at from a budgetary standpoint. Now, to put everything in a framework, we have been able to maintain extremely low budget increases over the last four years. In fact, over the last four years, we have increased taxes less than 1% over the four years. It's about .24% per year on average. And two of those years were zeros. So if we passed another budget this year at a .7%, we could accomplish that. But this is an unsustainable trend. Expenses are going up. Our contracts are calling for 2% to 2.5% per year increases across the board. PISsers continues to go up. Social Security will go up with the salaries. And fuel is going up. Everything's going up. We're in an inflationary cycle now, slightly, but an inflationary cycle. So it's unrealistic to expect our expenditures to stay flat and be able to cover it with just enhanced revenues each year. So at our committee meeting, we started talking about how do we prepare the district for the future. And where we really looked at was our capital plan. When we started this process a few years ago, we did a 10-year capital project plan. At that point in time, the total cost of the proposed renovations, proposed repairs, if you will, were slightly over $15 million. And in our strategic plan, when we put it together several years ago, we had set a goal for the district to maintain a capital reserve fund of 75% of that balance. So at all times, we wanted 75% of that $15 million in place. That's about $11.2 million. So we currently have $7,600,000. So it's a lot of money, but we're not at our goal. Over the last three years, in 2017, '18, we spent $815,000 out of our capital reserve fund. In '18, '19, we spent $2.7 million. And we just approved $2.2 million for '19, '20. Philosophically, we approved it. We didn't actually spend the money yet. So if you take that $15 million and divide it by the 10 years, 1.5 million is the average. We had some roofs and things like that. We're going to have some more coming down the road. Lower and West are going to probably need to be rerouped in the next five to 10 years, as well as some HVAC plants are going to need to be addressed somewhere during that period of time. So what the committee had discussed was the possibility of building a little bit of revenue base in our budget by increasing slightly above that .7%. And I provided with you in your board update last week, some scenarios where at 1%, 1 and 1/4, and 1 and 1/2%. We're not looking to go way over or anything like that. But adding a little bit to your revenue base now, when you have the ability to, without damaging the taxpayer too much, will provide benefits to the district in the future to try and keep the annual increases down. So that's what we had spoken about at our committee. That's the status of where we are at right now. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Question regards to our PISsers fund. Approximately, how much money is actually in the PISsers fund?
It's approximately $6.4 million. But we're looking at... We plan to use $900,000 this year and $1 million for next year's budget.
And prior, we've always allocated some of that PISsers fund every year. Have we used any of that?
No. We've been having surpluses, but we were allocating much smaller amounts on an annual basis. So now, if we're budgeting for $1 million in use, we might not use it all, but it's more unlikely that we're going to have enough additional revenue to offset that $1 million. So I anticipate that we'll see annual deficits for the next several years because we're utilizing that PISsers reserve.
All right. So when this came out, this idea from last board meeting, I made kind of an effort to talk to as many stakeholders as I could as in asking them. Not surprisingly, they all would say, absolutely not. I don't want the budget to go over what is necessary. They don't want to go above the .7, of course. One of the areas that I found kind of appealing on that part of the discussion was the fact that you have many stakeholders that are not part of the district. And they're going to move yearly, right? So in essence, what I'm telling some people to do is you're going to have to pay ahead now, even though you may move one year, two years, in a year or two years down the road. So I don't raise as the other peoples and other community members in the future as much. They don't go for that, as much as I hate to say it. They just don't. So I do have a hard time authorizing to go above because I have yet to find anybody that I've talked to that says, yes, absolutely. I'd rather be 1, 1, and 1 than .7, .7, 2.3, 2.6. They would rather go, give me what I need now. I'll worry about... And everybody always does. I'll worry about it in the future, all right? Because same thing happens on all your bills. I'm never going to turn around to Comcast and say, hey, yeah, just charge me an extra 50 bucks today so I don't have to pay $75 two years from now. I'll pay the 50, 50, 50, but... And the thing. So I have a hard time actually going above the .7. I'm going to need somebody on the board to convince me that that's not the right idea to go up to that 1.0 or 1.25. I just don't... I'm not there yet.
And I'm not going to disappete that philosophy. That is certainly a valid viewpoint. What I did provide to the committee members and to the rest of the board via the update is there is a scenario, and we're not there, but we could be in the blink of an eye. We are limited to the Act 1 index. That's what we can raise taxes. There is no exception. That's it. So there is the potential, if we go into a recession, revenues are flat or decline, expenditures continue to increase, we may not be able to raise taxes enough to pay, to maintain what we currently have, that we're currently offering. I'm not trying to say it's a crisis and it's going to happen. You know, my job is to try and not let that happen and look ahead and try and control things. But there's some things that are beyond your control. The charter school tuitions is a prime example. We would not have expected that to increase as drastically as it did this year. And a lot of those kids never came to us. They just moved into the district and into a charter school, or they were in a charter school when they came. So that just happens. We have very little control. But if you don't prepare yourself for that possibility, you could be at a point where you have to make some decisions that you really don't want to make, whether it be staffing, or whether it be programs, or whatever, or eating your fund balance. So I mean, just please keep that in mind as we go through this. By adding a small amount to the revenue stream on an annual basis, it would have less impact. When I started, I was the recipient of a budget that had three consecutive zeros. And I had to raise taxes 9.9%. That was not fun, okay? It would have been much easier for the community to absorb three 3's than three zeros and a 9. So we haven't had that since, but...
And I don't disagree, but that particular group, they acted very poorly when it came to balancing the budget. I think we've done a very good job. The administration has done a very good job of making sure that we weren't going to get hit. Like, they simply said zero. I don't care how much we're below. Zero. I don't care how much we're below. Eventually, that came to roost. I think we've been very good with making sure that we're giving the correct budget and balanced budget so that we weren't going to get hit two years now. Obviously, anything could happen two years, three years from now. If anybody else disagrees with me, please tell me where I'm wrong and I'll gladly listen.
I don't disagree and had and have similar concerns. And what I would suggest and request is that we, whenever we as a board are looking at and considering putting in new programs, new this, new that, that we always... That we kind of record what he just said and replay it. So we're keeping that in mind. So when we're looking at, you know, this year we added a foreign language. That was a huge expense, all right? We need to be weighing all these type of things, you know, and then not just have this stress that we're having right now, you know, one month out of the year. I think we need to constantly be hearing this and being told this.
Dave, I have a question about new revenues. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I did get an update. Bob gave me sort of a, you know, in a nutshell. But concerning some of the new homes going up, I was told that in the current budget, 20 homes in Spring Valley Farms were included. Is that true?
We've reflected Spring Mill Farms or whatever is not the only thing happening in Pots Grove.
No, I'm aware. I'm just focusing just on that one right now.
I don't project specifically for developments. I project revenue streams on property transfers and revenue streams on property taxes.
Okay. Well, I was told that 20 homes, that you were considering 20 homes in Spring Valley Farms to be current.
We've received about 20 of them this year.
Okay. Well, they've sold 55. So that's a really big difference.
Well, I also indicated that we're still getting significant numbers of property tax assessment reductions in the district.
Okay. Well, they're telling, and from what I can see by looking on public record and following through, they're telling anyone who looks at the homes to approximate about $4,500 a year for taxes. And that's, you know, with whatever assessments are being done. Those homes are selling... The homes that they're selling now are more expensive than the ones they were selling in the beginning because now every home has a basement. So we're looking at the 330s, 340s, 350s. So the assessments obviously are going to be a smidge higher for those. So that's just... I mean, that's a big difference. If you go from 20 units to 55 units, transfer tax alone is huge. You add in, you know, the yearly taxes, that's huge too. I mean, that right there, just that change right there can take a chunk out of what we're looking at right now. And keep in mind, 178 units going in there, very few children. That's huge for us. And that's yearly. That's not something that we go, huh, surprise, it's only going to happen once, like a transfer tax. It's yearly. So it could be worked into the yearly budget. I just feel that that was undercut. And we also never found out how much we're going to be taking in from the new stores in Upland Square. I did ask you before and I understand that. But I do feel that there could be an estimate given due to the square footage. You can look at the square footage of the neighboring stores, you know, an approximate. We're not looking, you know, down to the sense. And then the new affordable housing that's on 100, along with Sprogl's Run. I understand Sprogl's Run. We could be looking at quite a few kids coming in because those houses are huge. With the affordable housing, I haven't heard anything about what we're receiving from that. If anything, I don't know. Because it's affordable housing, maybe they also get a tax break too. But that's the kind of stuff I'd like to have some follow-through on because it's been asked before and it hasn't really been answered.
We've taken all these things into consideration in our revenue projections. Did we do it on a specific development-by-development basis? No. We've projected increases in property taxes. We've projected increases in transfer taxes. Right now, our budgeted assessment is about $4 million above... Don't hold me to that. It might be $3 million, above what the current assessed value of properties in Pots Grove are. So we've taken that into consideration. We're projecting income coming from those... Some properties, maybe not those, maybe some others, of $4 million of assessed value. If you take 2,300,000 houses, you know, you're at 6, 6 million. You know, there are still reductions coming through, corporate reductions, things like that. We are increasing our revenues. I don't want to budget $8 million and have it come in at $4 million and have, you know, a significant decrease in the revenues. So yes, I'm conservative, but that has all been taken into consideration in our revenue expectations. Will it come in higher? I hope so. Can I guarantee it? No. But I can try and get more information for you before our next meeting on the commercial stuff.
My only silly question is, how about Harrisburg? Have we heard anything?
Have we heard anything?
We had some projections come through, some revised numbers based on the governor's budget proposal. We haven't heard any changes from the House or the Senate yet. But what I can tell you is that the, the numbers that the governor used to propose revenues for all the districts were old, old numbers, and we've gotten some revised data that have been submitted. And as a result, our revenues dropped about $50,000. Not our, our revenues haven't dropped, our projected revenues have dropped $50,000. So we're not gonna get as much more as we had hoped for. Yep?
Not really a budget question, but a thought I had from Ashley's question. With the new developments, are we keeping in mind and projecting what we're gonna potentially see as far as new students coming in from the developments?
That's very hard to do, because you don't know if you're gonna get 20 seniors, or one kid per grade, or whatever. So it may, it may not have an impact. Ashley's absolutely correct, the Spring Valley Farms has not generated any kids, to my knowledge. The affordable housing along Route 100 probably has 10 or 15 that are coming out of there already. So...
I would venture to guess that Sprague's Run will generate quite a few, just because of the size of the homes, and they are quite affordable for the size. So that's just a guess, but if you look at how huge they are, I, I wouldn't move in there if I didn't have at least two or three kids, personally. Too much house for two people, in my opinion.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions, comments, worries, concerns? All right. So to recap the recap, I think, first of all, thank you. I appreciate very much the fact that you and everybody on, on the staff administration here are estimating conservatively. That's, that's a good thing. I'd rather do that than, you know, biting my nails every year, you know, waiting to see, are we gonna make it this year or not? That's, I prefer that. In talking about what, what we're gonna do, this part, right now, this is kind of what we've been elected to do, is to pick the route that we are going to follow for the next year. I will tell you personally, I know that we could pay down that $240,000 and have another 0% year. We have the money, and looking at next year, I think we could do that for one more year, without taking a large risk of having a shortfall like the one that, that Dave described. The, the seven tenths of percent and the $240,000, I wouldn't change the decisions that we made this past year that led us to here. I wouldn't change any of them. So we end up $240,000 short in terms of the revenues that we got and the expenses that we have. So a seven tenths of percent. I, I'm happy with that result. I'm happy, I'm very happy with the fact that we added that foreign language and we added some exploratory in the, in the middle school. I think that's a very good thing for our district, and it was a decision I don't second guess. We talked about the, the other work with the $600,000 for the salaries and that, and that's gonna keep coming. That $600,000 increase in salaries is gonna be the same thing every year that we're gonna face. We're gonna have increased special ed costs, we're gonna have the increased cyber schools. That will, that will probably find a level ground somewhere, probably not this year. It's probably gonna go up again, all right? And maybe next year. So the seven tenths, I think, is a very conservative number. We're paying as we go, we're not digging ourselves another, a $250,000 hole for next year. It's not really a hole, it's more of a ditch. But we're, we're paying as we go. The only thought that I had is that when we look at the tenure plan, and, and I'm looking further down the road in the next year, I'm looking three, four, five years down the road, as we start to run out of the Peasars money, and we start to go into deficit spending on the Peasars Fund, you know, so that, instead of getting a, a push of, of some money from the Peasars Fund, we're gonna start paying more every year. It's gonna become a net negative. Likewise, you know, we're looking at the projects that we're doing, and we've, we've, we're looking at the lighting and the, and the controls and the electrical equipment and the cameras and things. These kinds of equipment costs are gonna kind of keep recurring, and we're still pushing some things off. We are not being aggressive, I don't think. We can describe, we're, we're doing our capital projects in an aggressive way. We're meeting expectations, we are not exceeding expectations, and I really don't think we're kicking any of the projects down the road too much, any of the significant projects. But we've still got a number of them to do. You know, we've, of that 15 million that we talked about, we've paid about five so far. Okay, we've, so that, you know, just do the math, that leaves, that leaves us with about 10 to do, and we've got 7.6 million now with 2.2 committed. I've got half the money I need to pay for those remaining projects. We have to rebuild that somehow. So when we talked last time about raising the rates a little bit beyond to 1%, 1 and 1/4, 1 and 1/2, that's kind of what I had in mind, and why we would do it. The, the question is, the question that we're, we're facing is, do we want to hold the line at zero? Do we want to hold the line at just what we need? Do we want to push it forward? Part of our, part of our job and responsibility is to make that decision, and then defend it and explain it. I could go, I, I could defend all of them. I could defend zero, I could defend a point and a half. I think that if, my recommendation is that the very least we can do is the .7. I would be happy if we considered, but again, I'm not, I, I won't die on this hill. If it's not the will of the board to put in a little bit more to, to start looking at that Peasars, again, it's not tomorrow, it's not next year, but it's down the road. The, the shock value, as, as people who may be on the board at that time, you know, down the road when things happen, when you have people with pitchforks in the audience, it's less than desirable for making good decisions. You know, when, when people are looking at large increases, nobody's happy. Some people haven't planned for it, budgeted for it, whatever, and it's, it is, it is a hardship. And when you listen to people that are gonna lose their house because they just don't, they just can't generate that extra money, you know, big, big increase, that's heartbreaking, that's very, very difficult. So as I said, I'm happy, I'm not happy, completely happy with the zero, and I think that's not the best we can do. I think a seven tenths is, is, hold the line, perfectly defensible, perfectly acceptable. And I think the other three options, 1 point, 1.25, 1.5 are, are defensible. So that's, that's my piece. If, if folks want to think about it a little bit more and, and get whatever, because we, for right now, we are not looking at, and this is the, the big fear, the thing that's gonna mess you up are the things you don't see coming, the 2008 budget crisis, okay? When all those, when all those houses went bust, and all the banks went in trouble, and everything went upside down, you don't see that coming. Do you have a plan for that? Do we have a plan for that? And I'm not gonna say we have to have, you know, 100% of our budget, we're not, we're not gonna ever have $70 million in the bank, right? We're not gonna do that. But if things do go crazy, and we have to look at people who are having trouble making their loans and, and revenues going down, do we have enough to absorb that? I think right now, we're essentially playing a zero-sum game. Everything has to kind of continue as it is, we have to keep selling the houses. We, we, we're absorbing some of the, the cost of the increased salaries and the increased cost for cyber schools and the special ed. We're, we're kind of right on the edge of staying, playing neutral, if we will, not, not really moving forward, not amassing anything that we can use to set aside. And we're actually paying down some of the funds that we have set aside. So at some point, you have to start putting money back in those. And my point that I made last time, and I'm making it again, obviously, is that now is a good time when we don't have to. When we don't have to, if we make a small change, I, as I said, it's defensible, it's explainable, and it could help. But I serve as the will of the board, so please help me out with anybody. Does anybody have any other thoughts, in agreement or disagreement with anything I've said?
I guess I'm of the mindset of hold the line at .7. I think zero would be irresponsible the other way of just really putting ourselves back for future expenses. And I don't want to overburn the taxpayers with going above that, so I'm with .7.
You know, I actually, when I ran, actually walked around here and found people who were selling their houses because they couldn't afford the taxes. That's a very dramatic impact to confront some little old lady who has to move out of the, out of her forever home, where she raised her kids and she did what people would say is the right thing, and can't afford their house. That's a dramatic impact. On the other hand, sit over here, and I think Dr. Shirk and Mr. Nestor deserve a large amount of credit for carrying the budget and bringing things under control. We may not agree on every jot and tittle and every penny. I have, you know, I could say, I told you so about language requirements, but I didn't say it. But, yes, I did. But anyway, you know, we've got to look at, you know, the, I, I agree, holding the line at zero is going to create a disaster. You know, you've gotta let the water out of the, out of the dam sometime. So I think that part's a good part. I would also go along with your idea, or the idea that was presented earlier, of a cushion to, to, or a safety net, because you do not want to get trapped in that awful scenario where, oh my gosh, we've gotta go and hit the maximum that's allowed and all that stuff. We don't want to get there. So, you know, I, I could go .7 or some amount maybe to give us a cushion. I'd love to have, you know, I've never had a cushion in my financial career, it'd be nice to have one. So I could go along with that part, but zero doesn't make it this, this year. Zero is an aspirational target. I know Dr. Shirk and I talked about this, zero is an aspirational target. And this is a story I remember telling Dr. Shirk. I came across my ancestors' school tax returns from 1890 to 1910, 20 years. Now, aside from the chuckle of your school taxes were $2, over that 20-year period, the taxes didn't change. They paid roughly the same amount for 20 years. Boy, that's a great aspirational goal, but the reality is, in the 1890s, funding was very different. Taxes went up, they built a school, they didn't float a bond issue, everything was cash transaction. The state paid for a huge amount more than it does today. Our aspirational goal should be 0% forever, but that isn't going to work under the current tax practice. We've gotta do something. And I think Dr. Shirk and Mr. Nestor have done an outstanding job at trying to hold the line. You know, we're all gonna gnash our teeth, and we're all gonna be unhappy, and I'm not gonna be happy when I get the envelope with the, with the number in it, but I'm gonna write the check and get it, and get it over with. And I, you know, I, I listened to this, and I understand where some people are talking, coming from, who want to have zero. But I ran a department, and I had to do budgeting, and, you know, I had to live with, with real fiscal constraints, and that's where you're at. So that's my two cents, and that's, hopefully that's helpful to your discussion.
So it appears to me, without actually taking a vote, that we're settling on the seven tenths for this year. We can take the vote, but I think you can use that for guidance for, for the next little bit. We are gonna pass the final budget at the end of June, so we have another meeting between now and then to talk about this further, but I think that's the direction we're headed. We're gonna look at every year, year by year, because they're not the same, every year's a little bit different. And when, when and if, Mr. Nestor's a little bit more shrill next year, we'll, we'll, we'll take that into account and, and look at it then, but I'm comfortable with the seven tenths for now, for, for the next little bit. Do I understand this to be the general will of the board? Okay, very good. We'll try it again next year, right, man? Okay, very good.
I, I'm gonna abstain on that non-vote, because of, I think, some discussions that are for other places. But I think by next meeting, there's potential to have a slightly different discussion, depending on where we go with things. But on a separate note, one thing that's brought up, has come up frequently through the years, that I continue to not see any progress with, is what are we doing about getting back or keeping kids from feeling the need, or families from feeling the need of needing to go to charter school? This isn't, you know, for us to figure out right now, but I think we need to, in the very near future, have this as a discussion item at the board level, and for the board to give direction to the administration. You know, we do, I mean, Mr. Nestor said, you know, we have a number of kids coming in and never even been to our district. What are we doing to reach out to those families and say, hey, come see what we have? Kids that are leaving us to go to a charter school, what are we doing to say, hey, you know, sorry to see you're thinking about leaving, you know, anything you can share with us, so, you know, to, to try to, quote, fix things, if that's what the issue is for the future? I think we need to be doing more, not less, in that regard.
Okay, moving on to action items for personnel.
Can I make a motion to combine 5.1 to 5.6?
We have a motion to approve action items 5.1 through 5.6. Are there any questions, comments, worries, or concerns? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Very good.
Thank you. Moving on to action items for business, 6.1, the food service budget. I'm asking the board to approve the food service budget as presented for the 1920 school year.
We have a motion, a second to approve action item 6.1. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So without objection.
Moving on to item 6.2, Cottage 7.
I'd like to combine 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4.
Second.
The motion to approve those names? Okay. We have a motion, a second to approve 6.2 through 6.4 on the action item list. Does anybody have any questions on any of those particular items?
Question on 6.2, the notes say five students will be billed, but this is ESY, not summer school. I'm presuming that means the district will be billed four or five students attending that school, just to clarify. Yes?
If there's no further questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Moving on to 6.5, MCIU bid award. I'm asking the board to approve the general supply, art supply, medical supply, paper bids conducted by the Montgomery County Intermediate as presented.
Still moved.
We have a motion, a second to approve action item 6.5, the MCIU bids. Does anybody have any questions, comments, worries, concerns? Go ahead.
I did have a question, is there a particular reason why the amount of paper usage went up 33%?
The paper usage didn't go up 33%, but we've been drilling down. No, well, prices went up a little bit, but we've also been making a concerted effort to use our reserves, so...
From 30%, 30,000 to 40,000?
We used them this year, so we don't have them to use again next year.
There's a metaphor there, isn't there, for the budget, something like that? The way you get your message across is to keep hammering it home, my friends. Asked and answered. Does anybody else have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
I make a motion to combine six point six to six point eight.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and a third, and a home over there, um, to have those three items combined. Um, are there any questions on any of those items?
Only question I had, just to clarify, and I'm, I know, I believe I know the answer, the retired iPads are going to go down to the elementary level, correct?
They're not retired. Did you ever see Toy Story Three? All right. They hope to make it to Bonnie. So, so there we are. So are there any questions, comments, besides that? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Moving on to six point nine, the white fleet replacement. We're asking the board to authorize administration to contact, contract with John Kennedy Ford of Pottstown for the purchase of trucks in the amount of $183,000.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, for item six point nine, replacement of the white fleet. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Could we just recap that?
May I help you with that? Um, the original idea was that we set, as a part of that capital budget, the projects that we had for this year, uh, an amount of $200,000 set aside to replace three vehicles, one, including one, uh, delivery vehicle, box truck, yeah? Um, when they actually, and I, I hate to do this, I should let you have the glory, but sorry, I'm greedy. When they actually went out and got the bids and started talking, they found out they could instead get five, including the box truck, for 189, saving $11,000 and getting two additional vehicles. Is that about right? Brilliant, so, hooray for us. Well done, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of replacing the white fleet, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, very good.
Moving on to item six point ten, the purchase of bleachers and benches. We're asking the board to authorize the purchase of four bleachers and four benches for the high school from School Valley Sports in the amount of $8,672.
We have a motion, a second, on six point ten, purchase of bleachers and benches. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
Cool question, as in to, uh, this is going to be out of the capital fund, correct? Why not Market Street? Because we haven't used that in a while, correct? And we have about, I think, over a hundred and twenty? I mean, this is exactly what I thought Market Street was for. Rather than just saving it for something else, to me, it was always meant for something was a one-time necessary item for the athletic department.
And it's not specific for one team, right?
Unless someone on the board has a different idea, I'd like to make a motion to use the Market Street funds.
Okay. Hang on. You made the motion, you seconded the motion. So if you would make the motion, you would second this amendment to the motion, then we can just go forward.
I'll make the amended motion.
Okay.
That we change the funds to come out of Market Street, capital, to go to Market, out of Market Street.
I'll second that. Okay, there, just kept that in order.
I see, Dr. Nippert is a Robert Schrulls guy, and I don't want to run afoul. I know. So we got it all done, I think, the right way.
I never worry about Robert.
All right. So there we are. We have a motion, a second, in the right order, from the right fund, and we're going to say, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Moving on to six point eleven, the H V A C, preventative maintenance of building automatic system and controls. We're going to ask that the board authorize administration to conduct, contract with Johnson Controls for the maintenance of the high school, H V A C, automatic controls for the next two years as presented.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the item six point eleven on the HVAC preventive maintenance. Uh, are there any questions on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection, and on to education.
On to education, we're asking the board, seven point one, overnight trip for the music departments for a performance in Orlando, Florida. Uh, we're asking the board to approve this overnight trip as submitted. If you'd note that this is for the 2020 school year, they would like time to fundraise for this event.
We have a motion, a second, to approve an overnight trip in November of 2020. Um, does anybody have any questions? If not, if not, all those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection, on to policies.
Action items for policies, eight point one. Uh, our recommendation is to approve the policies as submitted.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the three policies before you, and item eight point one. Um, we've had these, we've had discussions, we've revised them. Thank you very much to the policy committee for, uh, doing the hard lift on that, and especially, I'm happy to see the, uh, the work there, so. Um, does anybody have any questions, comments, worries, or concerns? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Make a motion to combine nine point one and nine point two.
We're not going to have much of a speaking role if you, if this keeps up.
That's.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, a second, for nine point one and nine point two, the meet, uh, meet, the minutes of the two committee meetings that were, uh, presented. Anybody have any questions on those minutes? If not, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Very good. All right.
New business. So I have one thing to bring up, um, something I've started to look into and have had quite a lot of interest in, uh, from personal experience, not in the schools, but in other settings, and that's the use, um, of having trained, uh, dogs in schools, uh, for emotional support, uh, and in various ways, really. A lot of schools use them for breeding support, believe it or not. Um, they're great for anxiety, uh, to help de-escalate, things like this. It's a new, uh, trend that's happening in districts around the country, um, around the world, really. Um, and, uh, something that, um, if the board is, you know, interested, um, that the policy committee can take a look at, uh, there's various things that need to be looked at. Um, there's, thankfully, because of the trend, there's a lot of things already created out there, uh, that we can kind of base things off. Um, but, um, just looking for feedback, if there's any interest to research this further, and maybe bring you a, uh, you know, a proposed policy or something to that effect, or put it on the agenda for future discussion, if we want to discuss it more.
I think that's a great idea, because as, as things are changing and times are changing, I'm starting to see more and more children that do need it. We had a student, Sarah, a couple of years ago, that had, it was the first time it was introduced, but it's always good to look outside the box and look for future, so we're prepared.
So, I'm not, I guess I'm not too up on this, different things here. Are we talking about students that have their own service dogs, or we are going to hire a company to bring in service dogs for students that may need them whenever they want?
Neither, really. Um, it would be a separate policy, I don't know if we have a policy, but it would be separate issue from service dogs, which is what we had a student a couple of years ago have, um, although that might be something to look at, too, in regards to certifications and insurance, and, and so we're prepared for that. So whether it falls under the same policy or potentially a separate policy, we'd have to decide, but this would be more for, uh, to allow staff that would have an interest, um, kind of working top-down, oftentimes it's bottom-up, a teacher will come in and say, hey, I have a therapy dog, I'd love to bring him in. You know, in this case, what I propose is that we kind of set the groundwork, so if we ever have, uh, a staff that would be interested in bringing a trained therapy dog in, uh, that, that be ready to go.
Yeah, I'm in favor of you continuing that research, because just thinking about Montgomery County Courthouse, a friend of mine is the handler for the comfort dog, and that has been unbelievable for, you know, juvenile cases and, and, you know, all cases, really. So I, I appreciate your looking into that.
Just an FYI, Millersville has a support pig.
You know, sometimes people throw those balls right over the plate, and you've just really got to.
I'd lob that one right in.
Wow. But no. In terms of direction, uh, what I, what I think we're talking about then is the policy committee will start to look at this, will also need to look at, uh, some things in terms of insurance and, and need, and how it fits in with the special education or other, uh, counselor work, so I don't think we have, we can start with the policy committee for now, and then start looking at the other issues in terms of liability insurance and all that stuff, and how that would work, um, down the road. Makes sense to everybody?
Yes, sir.
Happy with that? Okay. Thank you very much, Bill, that was a good idea. Do we have anything else on our new business?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring one thing up. Um, I just wanted to let you all know, and it's, it, this is a good segue, because support animals were brought up in the, the last one that was here, um, was a student of ours who, um, actually, I wanted to let you all know, is competing for Miss Pennsylvania. So Jim and I have been asked to help her with her interviewing skills. So I don't know, Jim, if you've. Yeah, we're both in the process of setting up time, so I just thought I'd let you guys know, it's pretty cool.
Business, unless anybody has anything else. Go ahead.
I don't know if it's really falls under new business, but, um, I really, um, was touched, I went to the, uh, Potts Grove Village meeting, and, um, there was over, over fifty parents who attended, and this is basically for special needs parents, and the topic was what happens when you're not there, basically. So they had a, a legal team there, they had ARC there that helps with the social security, and, I mean, I was overwhelmed by looking at these parents and feeling like they are in, th- th- these students are in need every minute of every second. And, um, so, I, you know, kudos goes out to the Potts Grove Village for coming together. I think it's a positive thing, it's not something we hide, we're ashamed of, um, and they support one another, and we're going to have another meeting, they're going to have another meeting with follow-up, because there were so many questions, so many que- the parents couldn't absorb everything, like what happens if you have a trust and your child's on disability? Uh, do they lose the, lose their disability because of the trust? There's so many legal issues that, um, they actually suggest you start thinking about this at grade three. I mean, so it was really, um, it really hit, hit me, um, just thinking how fortunate we all are, and, uh, my heart goes out for these parents, that, um, every second of every day, they're thinking of their children. So, um, with that said, one thing I would like to put into place for next year is have a presentation for all of our Special Olympics skills kids that went to the Special Olympics who all earned medals. I really would like to see them get some recognition in front of the board, wear their medals, they're our students, too. So this year, we, we were thinking about it, but we just ran out of time. But, um, just to remember those students that we have, that they are still a part of our community, and, like I said, if you get a chance, Potts Grove Village is, um, it's amazing, really amazing. So that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just real quickly, answers to previous questions, um, I just, you know, Mrs. Grimm brought this up last time. Uh, I just, I just wanted to, uh, to, you know, to really just re-mention, if you will, to the board, that we do, we do, we have, like, our National Honor Society here at the high school has their own specific, uh, night that they honor those kids. The Western Center has their nights, and what, what, um, I try to do is manage all that, because if we don't manage it, if, if there's a, if there's a night, like senior awards are coming up, scholarships are going to be announced, uh, those students and their families will be recognized. I don't, I think we do an excellent job. Uh, that's one of the things that, that, um, that we take great pride in here, that I noticed right out of the gate when I first came, uh, you know, five years ago. So we do do a good job with that, and I do, we, we do recognize specific, um, special events that happen with students, or specific honors that don't get touched. That's sort of how we try. If, if that student doesn't have an opportunity to be highlighted in their school, uh, or within an organization, then we like to bring them here to be recognized. So, uh, and also with that being said, there are pieces to that, that we will add to our, our fall and spring recognition next year, because, well, okay, hey, that was a great idea, we missed that group, uh, so as we build that recognition piece for the fall and the spring, uh, we'll do that as well, and Special Olympics is definitely one of those pieces for, for the spring recognition, that, uh, yeah, but yet Doctors, they could do a super job of sending them off, you know, with a, with a, with a pep rally, if you will. So, uh, I just wanted to follow up, follow up with Mrs. Grimm, and that leads us to number, oh, absolutely.
I just wanted to announce that, um, the Western Center has received over $300,000 in scholarships for our students, so we're very, very proud of the hard work they're doing over there.
Can I just jump in quickly? We have Brenna down here on the end, you haven't gotten to speak tonight. So since the last meeting, um, you had been recognized, several students of ours had been recognized through the Y W C A. Can you speak on that for a little bit here, since it kind of falls into student recognition, so?
Yes, um, I won an award from the Y W C A Tribute to Exceptional Girls. I won the Coretta Scott King Award, essentially for, uh, my mo- involvement in the community, um, service, school activities, things like that. Uh, I thought it was a really, it was really awesome, there were so many girls there, there were so many, the speaker was incredible, she was a, um, former women, professional woman basketball player, so to hear her speak, it was, it, it all really, it was very empowering. It was just really nice to see that, um, they took so much time and effort in putting this together for us, to honor us, and I felt very special, it was very awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there a connection between you and Mr. Woodbury? On the athletic? So it's, it's a family that, that contributes to the community together, and it's, it comes from the raising and done a lot of things right, so congratulations, Bren. So that's it?
Yes, sir.
All right, so back to us for public comment, begging once again, anybody, any questions, comments, worries, or concerns from the public? If not, a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, a second. Everybody saying aye? All right, moving on.